I saw that. I saw Mr. Shane is not in attendance. Is he not there?
Yeah, he kinda had me.
With a proxy?
Exactly.
Is he there?
No, he's kinda in the other room relaxing a little bit.
Relaxing.
Yeah, someone just got out of a bathtub.
Oh, living the life, man.
Uh huh. Oh, no, he didn't think so.
Did you see Brock's email Suzanne? There's Brock.
Since I always end up at the top of the list, you don't have to stare at me, so I'll vacate.
Okay, we're at the top of the hour, so Cammy, whenever you want to begin, feel free to take the floor.
Okay, well, awesome. Well, welcome everyone. On behalf of myself and the executive committee, I want to welcome you all here. I am the president of NAFSA. Our executive committee includes Tom Michael, who is our president-elect, Larry Holsberg, Secretary, Brock Jolly Treasurer, and Jill Judd, who's our immediate past president. And this is our second in a series of town halls on the coronavirus. And these are changing times, as we all know. Lots of things are changing, lots of things are happening. There's a lot of fear, there's a lot of uncertainty going on with people. So what we wanted to do is get together as a NAFSA nation and really talk about how these things are impacting you, are impacting your business, are impacting what you are doing. So as we move forward, we're going to have one of these every day this week, and then we'll have more of these as time progresses and as we see what happens with this. This is a town hall. This is not a webinar. This is an interactive session where we're talking together, we're finding out what people need. Now, we have a number of resources that are out there, and Suzanne and Kevin will talk a little bit about those. But we're also going to be sharing ideas and hearing from our members. What is it that you need? What can we do to help you? What are the tools and the resources that you need to help make your business not only survive but thrive during this time? Our goal at the end of this is to really leave you feeling that you're equipped and that you're empowered as we move forward with this. So we're a community of people who are working together. And you know, the neat thing, the unique thing about our group is that we lift each other up. We share ideas, we help each other, and that's really what sets us apart with all of this. So I'm going to turn it over to our emcee for today. Our emcee for today is our treasurer, Brock Jolly. And Brock's going to talk a little bit more about what we're doing, how we're doing it. And as I said, we have one of these scheduled for each day, and each day we're going to be hearing from somebody from our executive committee. This will give you an opportunity to hear from them, get to know them a little bit, get to see their personality. And so Brock, I see you're on. I'm going to hand it over to you.
Perfect. Thanks, Cammy. I think based upon that picture, I'm the only guy in America who has less facial hair now than I did two weeks ago. So, but yeah, as Cammy said, on behalf of the executive committee, I do want to welcome everybody to today's call. Want to continue to reiterate that we really want to be here for you and provide resources and provide value to you as you navigate these waters. It's, there's a lot of fear among our clients. There's a lot of uncertainty. I mean, it's, you know, just looking at the stock market in isolation, the market's down a thousand points one day and up a thousand points the next day. And just trying to figure it all out. And I think our clients really are looking to us to lead in these trying times. Some of you I know were on yesterday's call, some of you were not, but I really talked about four main things. And I said, you know, sort of what my goal is with regard to these calls is to, four things, be proactive, be a leader, be empathetic, and be honest. And I think that, you know, if we can all go through this together and figure out solutions, adjust to the new normal, we'll get through this. And I think our clients really, really lean on us in times like these. So I would just encourage you, as a professional, as a NAFSA member, continue reaching out to your clients. You know, sometimes holding hands, sometimes kicking them in the rear end to get them to do what they know they need to do. You know, I think if we can just be proactive with that, that's great. And so happy to, you can listen to yesterday's webinar on demand. Also happy to, you know, if anybody has questions, just in general, whether about NAFSA or about what we're doing in our practice, happy to sort of share ideas and share things that we're doing. And so happy to help in any regard there. As Cammy said, the goal of today is really just to be an open forum to, we've got a scheduled conversation. We want to make sure that we're talking with you, not in any way talking at you. I wouldn't pretend that any of us on the executive committee have all the answers. But we do want to be a resource for you. We want to hear what you guys are doing. Please give us your questions. We had some really, really good questions on yesterday's webinar. We continued to disseminate those to the right people. Some of them, some of them were more ideas rather than questions. And so taking those to Diane Boyle and her team, and just making sure that we continue to advocate on behalf of our members is really critically important. So you've got a chat box here on the, on the side, you know, please feel free to ask us questions as they arise, and we'll do our best to answer them. Again, all of these throughout the course of the week are on demand. So please, if you can't join us live, which we'd really love for you to do, please be sure to check back and you can watch them on demand. We really appreciate, I would just say that the camaraderie that comes out of these calls and just the positive attitudes. So looking forward to the rest of these. With that, it is, it is, oh, you know what? Real quickly, before we switch the slides, I just included this because I thought it was, is a really apropos quote for, for these times, and it's a good Winston Churchill quote. "The pessimist sees difficulty in every opportunity. The optimist sees opportunity in every difficulty." And I said here, you know, my third bullet point under advice, every day is a great day to get better. You know, whether it's cleaning out the email or the to-do list personally and professionally, looking at professional designations, getting those knocked out. By the way, I'd highly encourage NAFSA's LACP designation. It's fantastic. Really adds a lot of credibility for your practice and is a reasonably quick designation to pick up as well. So look for those opportunities. It is my pleasure to turn it over to NAFSA's CEO. And Kevin Mayhew, I just want to say before I officially turn it over, has been, since he took the reins of NAFSA, has just been a tremendous guiding light, helping to navigate waters with the association, with the economy. And no question, these are trying times, but I would want no one else captaining this NAFSA ship other than Kevin. He does a great job, has a level head, and is really focused on what needs to be done. So with that, it is my pleasure to turn it over to NAFSA CEO Kevin Mayhew to talk about his lens as the CEO. So thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Brock. That was very kind. First of all, I want to thank everybody again for joining us on today's town hall call. You know, I think that in times like this, the need for a professional association to do exactly what NAFSA is doing is pretty obvious. And that's an opportunity to gather people together, to share information, to be a supportive community so we can help each other out. And then again, part of our job at NAFSA is to make sure that you continue to have the same environment where you can reach out and serve your clients well, you can look after their best interests. And then, of course, that we as an association are looking after your best interests. To again, make sure you're in the right regulatory and business environment so you can continue to do your jobs properly. So a few things, we just wanted to continue to update you on. Again, is to remind you that as this coronavirus crisis continues, NAFSA is deeply plugged in to everything that's going on in DC. We may not know a whole lot more than you know, since the media is covering this thing virtually minute by minute. But we are involved with various agencies and various task forces, and of course, in conversation with our representatives in the US House and Senate every day as to what's going on with this. And what we can better do to be a resource to them as we as a country work through this crisis, and also make sure that your best interests are being looked after. So again, you can continue to do the great work that you do. And that's really making sure that everyday Americans know that they've got a solid financial plan in place and that we as a nation and they as individuals and as families are going to weather the storm and that they're best prepared for what's ahead. So again, as a reminder about a couple of things, we're on various task forces with the White House and with FEMA. We continue to get updates from them every day as to what's going on. We pass along that information to you as well. We, we've been very robust in sending out member e-newsletters to keep you informed as to what's going on. And our various websites, Suzanne's going to go over in a few minutes, have up-to-date informational links as to what's happening again with, with the federal government around and how that might impact you. We are in constant contact again with federal and state legislators. A key thing there is making sure that you continue to be able to provide services to your clients, particularly in this time where there's so much uncertainty and people are worried about, am I going to get another paycheck? Am I getting, what's happening with the stock market? Why is this thing down 30, 35% over where it was just two weeks ago? What about my retirement planning? What about if something catastrophic was to happen? Am I protected? Making sure you can continue to provide guidance and support and advice to your clients to best help them make the best decisions for their financial futures. Our NAFSA staff, no matter where they're located right now, is teleworking. So we're all located in our homes or some other location remote, so we're following good social distancing because we want to make sure that our staff are properly protected from this virus. And that we also, if someone wants to get it, we don't spread it to anybody else as we do our parts as good citizens, just like I hope you guys are doing. I hope you guys are also following the recommendations of the CDC and washing your hands frequently for 20 seconds or longer, disinfecting surfaces, all that kind of stuff that we need to do as just regular citizens and doing our part as part of the society. For the foreseeable future, at least over the course of the next month and a half or two months, NAFSA activities, both on the national level as well as on the chapter level, will be virtual. So we'll be doing events like this. So again, we encourage all of our chapter leaders, if you had meetings that were scheduled, go ahead and still have them. Just don't make them in person. Broadcast them over Zoom or some other technology like this so that people can still have the camaraderie of getting together and at least seeing each other in virtual space. But let's try to not do it face to face for a while until we're given the all-clear by public health officials and by our leaders in government. The same thing is going to happen with NAFSA Live. For our events going on in Q2, those are going to be remote broadcasts, so we're not going to do them in a chapter meeting. We're going to do them from a remote location and broadcast it around the country. But again, we think it's important that we continue to share good thought leadership with you to make sure that you as professionals continue getting your CE's, your professional development, et cetera, along the way. So that's what we're going to be doing with NAFSA Live. The congressional conference, many folks have asked, is that still on? Well, as of this date, today, March 24th, the congressional conference is still on from May 19th and 20th. However, as we've seen every day, things change with this crisis, and we need to follow again the recommendations of public health officials and government leaders. And so we will make a call by the end of next week, if not sooner, regarding what's going to go on with the congressional conference, May 19th and 20th. At this point, it's still on, but it may very well be canceled because of the fact that if we can't get everybody safely to DC or if Congress is closed because the facility is shut down due to concerns over the virus, et cetera, we won't be impactful. And we only want to do this activity if it's impactful and if our members are safe. Because again, safety is our paramount concern. So keep posted on it. Right now, it still is on, but that, they're very well may change as situations continue to develop. So keep posted. We'll keep you up to date regarding that. And if for some reason we do cancel the congressional conference, or if you decide for whatever reason you just can't make it and you've already registered for the activity, we'll be offering, of course, everybody a full refund of the registration fees. If you do have a, after you're given your refund, if you would like to dedicate that to go towards IFA PAC or towards the War Chest or something else that helps us with our political advocacy, you'll be given an opportunity to do so. But we will be, if we do cancel the event, or if you decide you for some reason just can't make it regardless, we will be refunding everyone's registration fees for the congressional conference. And then also, we want to make sure that each of you also feels that, you know, again, your income is safe and protected. And part of our responsibility as your professional association is to help look after that. And so we have also been communicating with company leaders, stressing to them that in these times where there's so much economic uncertainty, one thing that we don't need to be uncertain is the ability of producers to continue to get paid by their companies. And so we're encouraging companies to continue with their same routine payment structure that when policies are issued, et cetera, or whatever your company has, is the way that which you were paid when you were bringing on business, that that continues. Because again, we want to make sure that all of our members know that they've got some financial security so they can continue to do what's right for their clients and look after them. And so we're communicating with company leaders to make sure they understand the importance of you all being financially sound so you can do your jobs. Part of what we do is your professional association. So I wanted to bring you up to speed on that. We've also, again, made sure that federal and state policymakers know we're a resource for them. And so as they get more and more calls from their constituents regarding, I'm worried about XYZ concerns if it relates to their financial status, we're saying, hey, listen, NAFSA members are here to help. So if someone needs advice on how to deal with this crisis, or just needs to talk to somebody about putting together the proper financial plan, please contact us because we're a resource for that. And you all might have seen that numerous congressmen have already tweeted out, hey, if you need help regarding financial security, contact a NAFSA member. And so it's a great way for us to make sure that we are providing that public service, but also for you all, it might be a way for you to reach out to more people and to grow your clientele. So we're on top of that. We are monitoring things every single day. And we will continue, as your professional association, to keep you up to speed with what's going on here in Washington DC and as we find out about significant developments in the different states to do that as well. And Suzanne will walk you through in just a couple of seconds again, where you can find some of those resources on our various websites. And so with that, I'll pass it on to our Vice President for Communications and Marketing, Suzanne Carraway.
All right. Thank you very much, Kevin. I'm going to stop sharing the PowerPoint, and then I'm going to share my screen so we can actually see this in real time. Okay, so we have put together quite a few new pieces of information to handle COVID-19. And in doing so, no time like the present to relaunch a couple of websites. That was not by design to have that all coincide, but we sped up quite a few things in order to handle that. So let me go ahead and show you where you would look to get this type of information. Everybody should be able to see my screen at this point. Can I get it now there, Drew Shamsky? You're good, mister? Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, so in our new website, if you haven't seen it, this is what it looks like. It is really a stripped down, this is the public-facing website. And again, the audience is for this is to really get clear and crisp in speaking directly to prospective members, to our legislators, policymakers, and media. And that is really the purpose of this particular website. The, to the point of our policymakers, our legislators, et cetera, we've put together this COVID-19, NAFSA members are ready to serve. And so we have gotten quite a bit of uptick from legislators at the state and federal levels. We've put, the government relations team has put this out to them saying, NAFSA is a resource. This is how we're positioning ourselves. You'll see the pop-up box will pop up no matter what site you're on. It will only come up once a day, but letting people, you know, as much as possible say, we're here, this is what we do. Our members are the ones protecting Main Street America. And so we've put together this page to really give a synopsis as to who you are. And so we can speak intelligently about that as the media comes in, et cetera, as well as a full page on COVID-19 resources. And so you can get to that page, and this is all publicly available. Now, on the other side, if we actually go through our member login, we just, today as a matter of fact, have launched our new Members' Log, Member Site. And if we go within here, and we go into our member site, you will log in and you will see that the member site is completely organized the way that we talk about our membership proposition, which is to advocate, educate, and differentiate. And you will see that we've put up a special link up here for members for COVID-19 resources. And of course, in this area, we will have the same publicly available resources, but we're adding a page that's really what we're going to call the Collaborative Resource Library. And so many of you have started to send us information in to say, this is what my company is doing. Here's a best practice letter I'm sending to clients, and so we're collecting that, and that will be live today. And so we, thank you for everybody who sent that in. Keep sending it in. We're trying to make sure that we can get a best-of-breed practices there. In addition to this, we also have newly launched our FinancialSecurity.org site, which is the consumer site. The consumer site, if we go over there, also has a spot for COVID-19 because this is an incredibly important part that we can make sure that this is a great opportunity for us to get involved in and going direct to consumer to provide them really good financial education at this point in time. And so the COVID-19 page is getting overhauled daily. This is again, is talking about direct to consumers now, we're adding up links, et cetera. And then after today, we're adding an entire section that's really breaking it down by topic. So cybersecurity scams, what about retirement, what about college planning, et cetera, in these types, in these times. What's great about this is this is a great opportunity. This is your call to action, members. This is a great opportunity for you to be able to do short videos, do some writing for us, be able to get direct in front of consumers to talk about the topics that are really weighing on their minds at this point. And it really allows us to jettison then you guys in front of them as much as possible. So we want to showcase what we're doing for Main Street USA. COVID-19 does afford us the opportunity with technology to be able to do that as quickly as possible. So we've stood up all of the social media channels for FinancialSecurity.org. They're ready to go. And we're actively now collecting videos for that. If I pop back over to the member site, you can see here, under volunteer, the host of opportunities that NAFSA offers you to volunteer. But in particular, the first one here is COVID-19forFinancialSecurity.org. So if you're in a situation where you can go ahead and provide a video to us, et cetera, we've put together a page and we've put together a quick way to do this that you don't have to rely on your own video capabilities, et cetera. You can merely sign up for a time with Zach Hules and Andy Moyer, who will go ahead and collect your video over Zoom, just like we're doing right now, edit it down, and we'll get it up and out to FinancialSecurity.org. So get you direct to consumers as quickly as possible. If you're wondering what would be an example, we have a great example here from Jennifer Hodges, who's coming from the PNC space, who's already gone, and she'll be our first one kind of out the door as we go live with that today. So you can see each day, we're putting together more resources. By the end of today, we'll have another piece of collateral that also you can hand out to your clients, talking about what NAFSA is doing for you and that you're a part of this organization and how we're here to help you, and you've got the support of 25,000-plus, you know, strong colleagues. So please keep sending in the information, as everybody said. We're going to turn this around and get those pieces out to you as soon as possible so that we're here to help during this time. With that, I'll pass it back over to you, Brock.
Perfect. Thank you, Suzanne. Great, great resources, great information. And I see lots and lots of questions coming in on the side, so thanks for those questions. We'll do our best if we can't, I realize some of these are about, how do I turn my sound on and off? But if anybody has additional questions, please, please do let us know. Okay, it is now my pleasure to introduce Ms. Jill Judd to talk about a little bit about what she's doing in her business and maybe some questions she's getting from clients and just great ideas. So Jill is our immediate past president, did a phenomenal job during her year-plus as President of NAFSA. So it is my pleasure to turn it over to Jill. Thanks very much.
Yeah, thanks so much, Brock. If you missed the call yesterday, I would suggest you go out and take a look at it. Brock did an amazing job, and I think he really set the tone for these calls for the week. Today, I'm going to be talking a little bit about communicating with your clients during these challenging times. And as mentioned earlier, I don't have all the answers. I have some answers. And I am sure you're going to come up with some others that are far more interesting and compelling than my own. But I just would like to share some things that I've been thinking about and doing and just looking at this from a larger perspective. We do know these are unprecedented times, and I truly believe that it's times like these that mean communication is absolutely essential. People are actually looking to anywhere. They're looking for a port in a storm. And I believe that we are the community of leaders they are counting on. So even though at the end of this call will end beyond, we'll end up with different communication strategies. I think the intention is still the same. We want to stay connected. We definitely want to stay productive. And I think it's really important that we be the voice to offer comfort and confidence for our clients who are out there. I almost hate to say this, but I truly think that we should capitalize on this opportunity. I think that you should take any chance to reach out to your clients so you can reassure them that you are in their corner and that you are the informed advisor. And that just goes back to advocate, educate, and differentiate. That is us. And let's go ahead and tout the value there. It's our opportunity now to really listen to their concerns and offer our professional advice. This time, we can showcase ourselves. I would just say, don't let it pass you by. This time we can showcase ourselves. I would just say, don't let it pass you by. Brock is a big one for quotes and it made me think about the one that mentions adversity and how it doesn't build character. It just reveals character. And one thing I know about NAFSA members, excuse me, you all have some character. So let's, let's see that revealed. Remind your clients right now that your top priority is to maintain the health and safety of, of them, of your clients, your team, and your community. Remind them that we're in this together and that you are open for business. Don't be afraid to mention that, you know, although, although these are trying times, it doesn't mean that there is no need for insurance and financial advice. The, the need for your advice does not go away. To best communicate with your clients during this type of incident, you have to be at your best and so does your team. I think excellent communication right now is going to reward us for many years to come. So think about that. Your clients are looking for a touchstone, which I think should be you, should be your office and your company. A lot of people have talked about how we are in competition with each other and I just don't believe that as NAFSA members, I think we're here as support. The interesting thing right now is clients are at home and they are emotionally connected to a struggle and to a challenge. And you really want to be part of that connection. So in any way you can insert yourself into the ongoing conversations they're having about this crisis. My feeling is get in the middle of it if you can. So I'm going to break this down into three different areas. One will be you, the other will be your clients, and then your team. So first, I want to start with you. And, you know, I think it's really important that you recognize you are under some new pressure that you haven't had to deal with before. I know a lot of you that I have heard from have staff that you have to pay, who may be stuck at home right now and not producing up to their usual capacity. And that's a challenge. Some of you have concerns about your own family members and what's happening with them in other parts of the country. Certainly, the news cycle has been an absolutely crazy ride. And I don't really care which side you sit on or who you support. This, this news cycle has been a barrage of information that we've all just been trying to get through. You need to be so many things to so many people right now. They're looking to you for a sense of, of calm and reassurance. They just want to know that things are going to be okay. And that's really what we do best. They, they're concerned their portfolios aren't going to collapse. They're concerned that their families remain protected. And if you think about it, that is a tremendous amount of responsibility. So in order to, to improve your communication right now, I truly believe you have to be at the top of your game. And I'm going to talk about something for a second here that is probably not going to be popular. Let's talk about personal health. You've got to keep this in check. If you don't, you are not going to be the best for your clients. So give me just a second here to go down this path. If you're not getting in a minimum of 30 minutes of exercise a day, and I know you don't want to hear this, you might want to change your thinking. Here's the reason. It's going to create more energy for you. You'll have better sleep and it is an incredible stress reliever. If you're not really sure how to make that happen, just look at your news feed on Facebook or really anywhere on your email. There are people sending things out there. Exercise apps that you could put into place immediately. And I was thinking, well, gee, if, if this isn't something you normally do, how can you motivate? Well, just take a look at this window right now of all of these people in NAFSA. Pick one and maybe partner, be a motivator for them or be motivated by them. Another thing I think about is the news cycle. And, you know, I think it's really important right now that you pick news that inspires you rather than creates additional stresses. Focus on, focus on the info that is provided by your companies that Suzanne was talking about, that you can find on the website. Focus on information from NAFSA and trustworthy news sources. That will keep you elevated and keep you pretty much pumped to be an incredible advisor. And then I'd also like to talk a little bit about professional aptitude. Know your stuff. If you're not feeling competent in a particular area, reach out to a NAFSA member. Get help from them. You'll be more, you'll be a more competent and confident communicator if you know what you're talking about. Challenge yourself also during this time to be a better employer, to be a better manager and a better business owner. I think all of this really matters because I know we're talking about communication. But if you are well rested, you are physically composed and you're mentally sharp, your communication with your clients is going to be fluid. It's going to be much easier for you to listen. You'll have more empathy, believe it or not, and you'll also enjoy your work a lot more. And now I'd like to just take a little bit of a shift to your clients. And let's talk, talk a bit about communication channels. There are so many ways you can reach out to your clients right now, whether it's through email or handwritten or printed letters, phone calls, social media, Zoom meetings like this one. Find, find some avenues that work for you. You can do everything from old school to high tech. That's my preference personally. I, I recommend for all of you using a multi-channel approach. Just be sure that it, it actually fits the recipient. And just to call out a little bit of how it works for me in my particular office, I've been, I've been calling a lot of my older clients and sending texts to my 20 and 30-year-olds and using email effectively as well as LinkedIn with my business owners. Let's see. When it comes to the strategies for communication, you've got so many options. Think about building out a dedicated webpage that can provide daily updates for them. You can provide daily updates on your social media. You can engage on social media to show that you care and understand how challenging it is for people. This is something that I've done. I've assigned my employees who are at home to be watchdogs on social media for me. What they're, what they're looking for is anything that is unrest or potential opportunities where I can actually come in and help alleviate some fears. You can send letters of reassurance. Let them know you're still in business and you're available. I have considered, not considered, pardon me, I did consider and then expanded my hours of operation. And I've been using technology to transfer phones depending on where I am. Ryan Penny is going to talk more about technology on Friday. So I think if you're, you're interested in finding other ways that you can make yourself incredibly available, be sure to join us on Friday for that. Also, tell your clients how your business is operating, how they can reach you. If you, if you use every contact, and we talked a little bit about this with Suzanne for the Financial Security Alliance, but if you, you use every contact as an opportunity to introduce them to that particular focus for NAFSA, that will give them something else to think about when you follow up with them after all of this passes and you give you a conversation starter. Social distancing, I know, is a real challenge for people, but I feel like there are other ways we can reach them. You've all noticed that the US Mail is still in operation, as is UPS and such. So consider sending a prepaid meal to somebody. Or one of the things I've done is I've sent a couple of notebooks out with my company logo on it. And the directive is to record the things they want to discuss when we call for a review. Right now, it's top of mind for them. So it's going to be really easy for them to write down their concerns. Another one that I've done, and a lot of you know this, you've received these from me, I use TouchNote. TouchNote is a really interesting application that if you've taken a photo of something, you can turn it into a postcard or a card and a company sends it right out for you. It takes a couple of minutes. I've received a lot of calls from clients who love getting them. And I'll just tell you a little bit about what I did this week. We have an iconic bronze statue. It's about 18 feet tall down in Santa Cruz. It's of a surfer and a surfboard overlooking the Santa Cruz ocean. And normally you see a lei around its neck or maybe a hat. But this week, it was in full hazmat. It had the mask, the gloves, and the goggles. And I got a picture of this and through an app like TouchNote, I was able to send out some postcards to my clients. I do believe that especially at a time that's very stressful, a little humor goes a long way. I don't think that because it's tough, people don't want to laugh. So, you know, make sure you're adding some levity where appropriate and find some new ways to connect with them that, you know, doesn't always look like a bill or an update. Okay, I'm just looking at the time. I'm going to do a little brief run-through for, for your team. Not really sure how everybody's functioning out there in terms of how much staff you have or whether or not you're in a managerial position. But I can speak to this in terms of how it applies to me. What I found is my team is really going through some challenging times themselves. Some of them are younger and this is the first, it's really the first incident like this they've really ever had to deal with. And it's quite a struggle for them. Plus, there are a lot of folks out there who are working remotely and they've never done this before. So I think the first order of business for team, staff on the outside is helping them maintain good mental health. So be sure to demonstrate your own calm and focused demeanor. And I don't mean for this to sound preachy at all, but I do know it's, sometimes it can become a little more unwieldy in all of the man, the demands that we have pressing on us. Continue to maintain high expectations of them as representatives of the industry and of your practice in particular. I think this is also, I think it's a great time to help them grow as professionals. You can remind them that they are also leaders in their own circles. I've done that with my team. In fact, when I, when I set them on their path to go home to work when we were put on lockdown a week ago, I mentioned that people are actually looking to them. They may not be looking to them right now to purchase product, but they're looking to them to see how they behave in a crisis, how they deal with it actually will impact them in the future. And then I think it's really important for us to provide them engaging work because remember, they're going to be talking to your clients. They are a communication channel for you. So remaining flexible for them as they engage in work that is beneficial, giving them, as I mentioned, giving them the expectations upfront. And then also checking in on them. I think for, for us as entrepreneurs, a lot of times we sort of go on overdrive. And it's easy to forget that there are people who are of an employee status that might really need a check-in. So remember, you get what you inspect. We have been on a shelter in place order for over a week and I've actually seen a lot of this play out already. So, so do, you know, take from this what you think can benefit you in your own practice. I've given, actually I've given my team projects. And what I did is I created a menu for them working at home. I have a few people that are, are just getting licensed, so they're unable to actually make outreach to clients. But I figure this is a great opportunity for them to do a sort of Lily-esque study while they're at home. So what I did is I gave them this menu option and said, choose what you can, log your hours. And they are everything from book assignments, watching movies Lily-style, TED Talks, you know, things like Simon Sinek's Start With Why or a lot of people remember Alex Sheen from a P+P conference because I said I would. Let's see. And I'm also giving them the opportunity to research outside volunteer activities that I think will interest them personally. It's just an opportunity for them to grow. I think then when they step back into the office and it is day one, they're going to be pretty charged to deliver great value to my clients. A lot of other things I've done for them, interviews with five people about catastrophe and such. And I, there's a little bit of a Q and A. And I think maybe most importantly, and this is a reminder for a lot of you who have been in the business for a while, creating a current top 100 list. It's been a long time since a lot of you have done that. And I think this is a great activity for your team because they are on social media. That, there's been an uptick for that. That's been pretty incredible right now. This is an incredible time for them to refresh the pipeline. So if you are not making massive amounts of conversations and sales right now, you know that you're lining them up. I think what it all comes down to is this, be sure you're finding a way to communicate with each of your clients on some level. Use, use every opportunity you can to be part of their plan as they're thinking about it now. You know, we always want to move them to be emotional about the products we sell and service. And right now, they are emotional about it. Let's be a part of that conversation. Above all, be available. Find a way, if you don't know how, hang on to joining us on these calls through the week. We've got some other opportunities to teach you or at least give you the resources you need to find a way to stay connected from a high-tech touch on down to, as I mentioned earlier, old school. We can do this together. I thank everyone and I see there are some questions. Don't know how you want to handle that, Kami, but I'll just hand it back to, or Brock. I will hand it back to you and just thank, thanks very much. Thanks for being a part of NAFSA, being a part of my NAFSA family and taking care of our American customers. Back to you, Brock.
Perfect. Thanks Jill. And I just want to take a second here and, you know, sort of recap, but also, you know, give some, some highlights and some other thoughts. So Kami, as always, thanks for your leadership and for kicking us off today. Kevin, same thing. I just think Kevin's continued vision and consistency of where we're going with NAFSA is really, really important. You know, it's, you know, NAFSA, like a lot of membership organizations certainly is not without its challenges, but the continued leadership and, and guidance and collaboration with Kevin and his team have been fantastic. Suzanne has just done a ton of work with her team, creating these NAFSA resources quickly, efficiently, expeditiously, and it's great. Use that website. Clients are asking questions. And then Jill sort of wrapping us up today on, you know, just some new ideas. I learned some, you know, I didn't know about TouchNote, so learn some new things. I do want to see that picture of the statue in the hazmat though. That sounds at least entertaining. And I think the personal health piece is, is really, really great advice. Couple of things. So the Suzanne was texting me. I think it's really, really interesting that on today's call, in addition to lots of NAFSA state presidents and past leadership, we've got everybody from a member who became a member of NAFSA within the last week to the current MBRT president. And I think that gives a, an awesome broad swath of what our industry is about. And so want to welcome both of you. Thank you for being here. In addition, I saw Randy Scritchfield was on. And in addition to Randy being in line to become the president of the Million Dollar Roundtable and of course, a NAFSA past treasurer, I want to give Randy a special shout out because a, a little bird told me that tomorrow is his birthday. So happy early birthday to Randy. Couple of last things. Please make sure to, to join us tomorrow. Larry Holdsburg will be the host. We've also got Tom Hegna. And I know most of you have seen Tom Hegna before, but he's always got new ideas, interesting ideas, great angles, just unique language, things to think about. And he's just a, a really, really helpful resource in how to talk to clients, things that work, ideas, strategies, et cetera. So Tom is joining us and just a great resource. I would also just end with where I sort of started out. And that is every day is a great day to get better. And, and, you know, it's, things happen to us and this is unique. But it's, it's the old adage, you know, it's 10% what happens to you and 90% how you react to it. And it's a challenge, but it's also an opportunity. So as my fellow NAFSA members, I would just ask each of you, what are you doing to get better? And how are you, to use Jill's words, taking advantage of this opportunity to reach out to clients to, in my situation here, clean my home office, which is way overdue? You know, and check things off the to-do list. You know, how do you, how do you find opportunity within those challenges? And be grateful for it. I said yesterday on the call, you don't have to be grateful because of the coronavirus, but how can you be grateful in the fact that this has come along? And what opportunities does it provide for you? So with that, appreciate too, a lot of people were on yesterday, they're on today. Maybe we should give a prize for those people who are on all five days. But really appreciate your continued, continued belief in NAFSA and your support and shared vision for, for the great things that NAFSA represents. So with that, I will turn it back over to the team if there's anything else to cover. But otherwise, appreciate everybody being here and look forward to tomorrow.